Good evening, I'd like to call to order the May 22 meeting of the Town Council Committee of the Hole. All members are present. Calendar and Communications. Counselor Parker?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Franco?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Heath?
Seriously. All right, on Thursday last week, I attended the RTM budget meeting, and there were some concerns expressed about why the town was not funding certain requests by some charities and outside agencies, specifically the Sexual Assault Crisis Center of Eastern Connecticut. And it kind of got me to thinking about the Human Services Department, and I understand, I'm told, that they do a lot of referrals and that kind of thing. So I thought it would be a good idea to look into what exactly are the issues that we have in Groton, and maybe recalibrate our Human Services Department and, like, budget priorities to see if we're getting the most bang for our buck and doing what needs to be done. So that was my communication. It's not a referral or anything, I'm just taking what was said and bringing it forward.
That was going to be my question, if you'd like a referral on that.
I would like to make a referral on that, but I have no idea how I'd verbally put that.
So you just did, so.
Oh, okay.
So we're good. Counselor Oberly?
I went today to a dedication at the Navy submarine base for the very first woman diver, had hot hat diver. And I apologize, I thought I had her name with me, as it turned out, it was somebody I knew. She's now deceased, but it was a very, very nice program, and they have a very nice new place for the divers, hot hat divers.
Counselor Atwater?
I attended the SCARA meeting two weeks ago, and I attended the RTM meeting that night. And I guess I'd just like to go on record, the RTM seemed to be taking the council to task for not funding the $50,000 study for the lead in the water. And as I thought about it more and realized that this was the second go-around for the CIP, and if they were that concerned, why didn't they do something a year ago? And our reason for not funding was because we felt immediate action should be taken and not another study, so I just would like that to be on the record. Thank you.
Counselor Schmidt?
I don't have any meetings, but in addition, I would say that the Board of Education does have a $500,000 savings account that they could use for anything that they want, and they could have dipped into that and started that problem two years ago.
Counselors, prepare.
I'd like to report that on Friday last, I saw another pedestrian on Thomas Road.
I've got a letter coming for you.
Okay. I received a packet of information from a constituent regarding Navy public-private housing, and I would like to make a referral regarding Balfour Beatty Housing, to see if we can explore what I've received from the constituent regarding a similar project in Kittery, Maine, where they are able to collect some compensation from that private developer, the public-private partnership.
Just to mention, we had an internal staff meeting last week going over different options with Balfour Beatty, so.
Excellent.
We're working on it.
Great. So that will be, you'll have two referrals, one from Counselor Heath and one from myself, please. And, let's see, I received a phone call from RTM Representative Merritt, and he had questions from his constituents regarding the transfer station fees, and we had a nice conversation about that. And he understood what we were trying to do, and he's going to take that information back to the people in his neighborhood and explain to them what we were doing with that. So I think that's everything. Having said that, approval of minutes. Counselor Parker, would you move acceptance of the minutes, please?
Our resolution accepting Committee of the Hole minutes, resolved that the minutes of the Town Council Committee of the Hole meeting of May 8, 2018 are hereby accepted and approved by summary.
Moved by Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Atwater. Any discussion on approval of the minutes of the May 8 meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of minutes 2018-0130, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Unfinished business? I don't believe we have anything unfinished at this point, so we move on to new business, 2018-0129, discussion with Groton Shellfish Commission and Mr. Brown, or Secretary Brown, left a paper on everybody's place. So if you gentlemen would just care to introduce yourselves, please, that would be very helpful for the record. Thank you for coming out this evening.
My name's Neil Brown, I'm the treasurer of the, excuse me, the secretary of the Shellfish Commission. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Groton and town of Groton. Thirty years in the city, fifty years in Mystic, so I have a background in both parts of the town. Went to local schools, graduated from Fitch High School. I'm here, unfortunately, Chairman is ill, he was at his doctor's this afternoon, he has bronchitis and will not be able to attend. But at our most recent meeting on May 10th, he had told us that he was invited to your Committee of the Hole to answer questions, and I've given you a list that I made up once I was told that I would be here rather than he, of things that I thought might be of interest to you. Feel free to stop myself and others that are at the table with me if we're all based from what you're looking for. I try to keep it to one page. The first thing I have to do is tell you I have one mistake down near the bottom. The third item from the bottom should be the addition of supervision of wardens. It's a short statement, but it's an important item on the list.
Excuse me, Mr. Brown, before you go on, would you introduce the other people you have with you, please?
Certainly.
Thank you, sir.
Why don't we start over here, and I'll let them each introduce themselves and keep it to about two sentences on what each of us bring to the table.
Could you please pass, can you pass the microphone? That way it can be picked up for the viewing audience at home, please. Thank you.
My name is Jay Kane, live at 131 Prospect Hill Road in Noink, and I've been a member of the Shellfish Commission for about seven, eight years.
I'm Roger Sherman, and I live at 306 Fishtown Road. I've been a member of the commission for probably 25 years.
Thank you.
I'm Bob O'Callene, I live at 49 Prospect Hill Road. I'm an alternate on the commission, I've been on the commission for approximately six years. I also serve as the treasurer of the Groton Shellfish Commission.
I'm Dick Conant, 17 Orchard Lane over in West Mystic, retired from subbase, environmental director, I am now the junior warden. Been doing that for about a year and a half now.
Thank you very much.
I reside at 79 Edgcombe Street in Mystic.
Thank you, sir.
The history of the Groton Shellfish Commission goes back prior to the formation of the town of Groton. If you went back into the 50s and before, actually into the 1800s, shellfishing, particularly oysters, was a very important part of the agriculture, aquaculture that existed in the At the time that the town of Groton went from having town meetings to having the present form of government, the decision was made apparently that there should be a commission that would take care of the responsibilities that had previously been carried out by the three selectmen. So there was, there was a small group, they used a book that was in the town hall in the records area called the Oyster Book, and that would cover leases that were made for aquaculture, primarily oysters. That exists to this day, it's still under the control of the town clerk's office, and we work closely with them. It's worked well, and there is a document, I have not made a copy of this for you, Mystic, called the Shellfish Management Plan. And it was effective originally, as I see it from this record, on January 21st, 1979. The copy that I have was updated, and that update was considerably, considerably later. The sheet that I'm looking at actually shows August 17th, 2001. The one part of this document which is quite voluminous that you might be interested in is that you can go into it, and it will show the state statutes that pertain, essentially we're following regulations that are established by the state of Connecticut. If you really delve into it, you would find that they also are following directions that come from the Food and Drug Administration at the national level. Those responsibilities have been transferred essentially through responsibilities to the towns along the shore. And so it was through the town council that existed at the time of these documents that there would have been a shellfish commission established, essentially replacing a big part of the responsibility that the three selectmen had before. And that's continued very, I think, efficiently in the town of Groton since that time. I say that with some level of pride for you, because you're the one that picks the people that end up on the shellfish commission, that we have people that have an interest and also have the backgrounds that allow them to serve. One of the things that we do, you'll find in the document that it specifies that you decided it would be right to have a group that consisted of five people, the members who are the five commissioners that serve for four-year terms. There's, in addition to that, three alternates. We find it very difficult to cover all the responsibilities with five people, so we run our meetings on the basis that we have full participation at every meeting by all eight members, both the five ones that are the commissioners and the three alternate commissioners. And this is very helpful to us in terms of covering all the duties that we have. Any questions that any of you have in terms of what I've said thus far? Well, hearing none. Basically, we do all the things by the book the way that you want them done, in other words, we have completely open meetings, we always hear from the public at the very beginning of each meeting, and in terms of the record-keeping that we do, we keep track of each vote, and we, though we obviously have people that have been selected by the parties representing the Democratic and Republican Party, we find that there's no semblance of party lines. In other words, the interest is in terms of doing a good job as it is laid out in this document. And so almost all of our votes are unanimous. We have a senior member who is involved in the business, so he frequently will defer and not vote, and that will be recorded. And we have participation on the part of the alternates as well, but we recognize, and everyone realizes, that if we were to have something where it were a vote that were not unanimous, then we would be falling back on five people that are the ones that can take part in a vote that's split. But we rarely would find, in my experience in 20 years on the commission as secretary, that we have to do that. We thought another area that you might be interested in, our neighbors, both to the east and west, Stonington and the East Lime area, have had a lot of ink in the press regarding the way that they deal with the public for leases. I thought that that would be of interest to you, so I would go over that part of it fairly quickly. And that is, is that within this document also, there is a lease agreement. And I think the part that's most important is, is that when someone wants a lease, they come to us in completely open meeting, and the first thing we tell them is they have a lot of hoops that they have to jump through in order to do the job properly, so that we'll be safe and to the satisfaction of the state and the town, which is to keep people from eating any shellfish that are not good. And so we're cognizant of that, and after we grill a person and we feel that they have the competency to go forward, we simply tell them, "Well, all right, you have to put in your application, and the very first thing you have to do is you have to get to the town hall and arrange to have a notice, and any area that has not been used for commercial shellfishing previously has to go to a public hearing before you can, before you can go forward." We are not making up the rules, the rules, the hoops that I referred to, that they have to go through are ones that have been established essentially by the state of Connecticut. Within the Department of Agriculture, they have a Bureau of Aquaculture, they call it the DABA, and that, that group listens very carefully to what's going on at the federal level, and they impose the appropriate regulations on each of the commissions along the shoreline in the state of Connecticut. And again, all of this is documented in this, I don't know, I've never looked at how many pages it is, but it, how many pages is?
Forty.
It's forty, forty pages, I'm told. With the exception of that, the things that we do, I've listed, I know you're probably afraid that I'm going to go on for three hours of the radio going, so I'm done. If you have questions and use this as a guide, we'd be happy. Amongst us, there's someone that can give you a good answer on anything that you probably would come up with.
I have a first question for you. If the public wanted to look at the management plan, is it online, or is it kept at town hall or at the library?
I don't think it's online, it's available in the town clerk's office.
Okay.
That's this most recent one, in fact, though we've each been given multiple copies of it over the years, it's amazing how, you know, an empty room can, you can bury so much paper in an empty room. And I've done it myself about three times already, so we don't hand them out because they don't, but town clerk's office.
Thank you. Are there questions? I'm sorry.
Call any, call any member who are on the, on the website, our telephone numbers for everyone are listed, so feel free to contact any of us, starting with the chairman, obviously, who is very knowledgeable in all aspects of what we do.
And that's from the Town Register, which is online?
Right.
So if you go to the town website, to the Town Register, then you could find the list of Shellfish Commission members.
I would mention in closing that at the present time, it's been, as you see, like 17 years since, so it's stood the test of time, but we are, because the appendices are still right, but they're not up to date in terms of a lot of things. Roger, show them the map that we have. This, this didn't exist 18 years ago, in Conference Room 2, where we meet, the second Tuesday, I'm sorry, I'm on your schedule, the second Thursday of every month, we have, we have 12 meetings a year, and it's always in Conference Room 2. That's an example, and you can turn around after they see it, so the camera can see it. That's modern technology, and we utilize what the town has available through the good wishes of the town, and they do a fantastic job for us. Roger, will you comment on what this means?
I would only say that, you can see, this is the town of Groton side, there's a similar number of leases on the Stonington side of the Mystic River. It's a very prolific area for oysters, and we're utilizing it both Stonington and Groton. I don't show Stonington on here.
So we're talking the pink area is the leased area?
Yes.
Do the couns-
We're also redoing a map for the recreational areas, which don't show on this, and the G.I.S. group at town hall is working with me on that as we update the map.
The recreational areas are on here, they're just not delineated in color, like the Quonic River is our big area, and Asker Point area.
Do the counselors have questions?
If anybody wants to look at this.
I think we're fine.
Counselor Oberly, and then Counselor Atwater?
I'm not sure about the question I'm going to ask, but were you having some problems with getting the water tests done that you needed in a timely manner? Not your fault, but was that a situation?
Yes, is the short answer. We, back just before 2000, the Shellfish Commission, members that aren't with us any longer, the chairman at that time was Ron Chapel, and he's deceased, had gotten word that the University of Connecticut was going to sell what used to be called the Lobster Hatchery down in Noink. And there was concern in the community generally, I think probably it's fair to say that the Noink community was concerned about it being sold on the open market and maybe becoming a condominium with large numbers, not that we have any opposition to that, but it wasn't a waterfront use, and this is a water, the Lobster Hatchery was in a waterfront area. So steps were taken to see if something could be done about that, the Shellfish Commission was, feels that it was instrumental in having it happen, but essentially, we, we ended up seeing that, we didn't cause it to happen, but we viewed it as a success when the town of Groton took over the ownership of the, what was then called the Lobster Hatchery. Now it's really referred to as the COOP, because it's the base of operations for most all of the commercial operations that are of oystering that are going forward in, in the town of Groton. All of the, all of the water samples that are required in order to assure that not only the recreational beds, but the commercial beds are clean and are suitable for removing an edible product from, requires a lot of sampling, and we have to send them all the way down to the other end of the state. That's not a, you know, not a fault of anyone, but there's been a hope and a want for a long time to have a laboratory, you know, with the facility at Avery Point, we thought it was the perfect place to have a laboratory that would service this end of the state. And for reasons that I can't go into and that'd be too long in terms of the background, that's what you're referring to, Leah.
Yeah.
That's, that's what is a problem. I should interject at this point, and I'll be jumping around now, that Groton is rather unique in that, for example, this year, we have had an income from permits and relatively smaller amount from commercial operations of income that totals about $25,000 at this point in the year that began last July 1st. And we have spent out of that $25,000 about $20,000, with the major part of it being to purchase clams that we, that we plant so that recreational shellfishing people, both men and women, will be able to dig out. And so we, we as a commission are self-sufficient, so you don't see a line item in your budget. And the reason is, is that we, we control the money coming in and going out, just as apparently the selectmen did before, and we've been successful at it at this point since the original setting up of the commission, with the exception of a period back in the 90s. And the waters were polluted and had to be shut down, and even though they are shut down, wardens become more important when, when you can't be shellfishing, because you have to have wardens keep from people from doing something that will hurt themselves. So, so for all that time, with the exception of when we were shut down so that there was no income, the Groton Shellfish Commission has simply taken in the amount of money necessary and has operated in a way such that it covered the expenses we have. And as you look at the list that I gave you, there's a lot going on, starting with, with the salaries for the wardens, we, out of the income that comes in, pay the salaries of the wardens that are required by state law to be out there. In other words, if they shut down every single bed, we still would have to, the town of Groton would still have to have wardens, and you would be paying for them because there wouldn't be any income coming in. There's a lot of reasons why we want to keep the water quality up, and that's, that's one of the big ones. You probably recall, some of you that have been on the commission, I mean, on the town council longer, would remember when we had to do a major overhaul of the sewage system in the.
Ford Hill.
Aquanic Bridge area. The Shellfish Commission was instrumental in getting the evidence to show to them that they, they had a problem. It turned out when we got into it that they knew they had a problem and were looking for, looking for help in justifying it, and we were able to provide that because we could show that, that the condition was causing a problem. And the town of Groton answered the cause, they spent, I think, about $8 million at that time to correct the problem. So we're very proud of the fact that we have clean water. All this is by way of saying that Groton, to my knowledge, is the only town in the state of Connecticut that actually pays all of the expenses out of, out of the budget that is from fees charged and handled by the commission. All the rest actually have a negative, negative cash flow, and as a result, have to ask for support from the budgets of each of those communities.
Thank you.
Ma'am? What do you want? Go ahead.
He's fine.
I'm almost hesitant to ask you this, Neil, because you're going to educate me even more. But going back to the question I asked, is, have you talked with anybody else closer that could be doing the testing for you?
What we're doing now to alleviate the problem somewhat is we're trying to sample along with Stonington and East Lime, and we pay the three towns for a driver from the COOP to take these samples to Milford and return. So we're paying for the transportation, but if we do it as we have been recently, we split it three ways, so it's not a big deal. It still is a timing issue. You've got to get them down there within 24 hours, they've got to be chilled, you have to get them there before noon, and they only test three and a half days a week, and sometimes they can't take our samples because they're doing milk cows or something, and, "Sorry, no samples this week. Oh, by the way, you're short samples, so you've got to do two next week," kind of thing. Yes?
Jay Kane, I think the answer to your question is, can anybody else do this? It has to be a USDA certified laboratory. There's two in Connecticut, one in Hartford, one in Milford. And the same test can be done at the City of Groton Water Treatment Plant, at the City of Groton Sewer Treatment Plant, at the Town of Groton Sewer Treatment Plant, but they're not USDA approved.
I see, so that's the problem, you can't work out something with somebody locally.
Right, correct.
What about if it was a state-run school?
Which one, Leah?
Again, on the point, that the, the town committees in Groton, I think, do a fantastic job. Jay has better background for the kind of work that we're doing than anybody. He's been a little bit modest, but he's a certified diver who goes all across the state and outside the state doing the work that relates to water treatment plants and other underwater activity that's directed to making sure the waters stay clean. I also have to jump back to tell you, those members that are absent because they deserve recognition. I mentioned Ed Martin, he's been on the commission for more than 20 years, he, before he retired from Pfizer Incorporated, was director of pilot plant operations for the whole of Pfizer worldwide. pilot plant operations for the whole of Pfizer worldwide. And a very responsible person that puts in, I think, I think it would be conservative to say that Ed puts in 40 hours a week voluntarily doing, doing the work that we're talking about, arranging for samples in particular to be taken so that we can stay, stay open. Professor Steve Jones is someone that some of you know. He's our own Indiana Jones. If there's anything you want to know about the history of shell fishing and other things, he's, he's the guy, he's the guy to come to. He's, he's fantastic. It's a privilege to be on the commission with him. We also have an alternate that's not here this evening, but has served the town before, John Claude Ambro. More recently, he was the moderator of the RTM. I will touch on an important part. We frequently have people that are interested in joining it. We have a waiting list in terms of getting people onto it. The reason that John Paul, excuse me, John Claude impressed us is when we were doing the, the legging, I mean, the heavy, heavy duty work of loading 300 bags, which would be 80-pound bags into a single restocking of some of the areas, he was there helping us unload this stuff. So, some of us are getting a little old and we appreciate all the help we can get on doing those kinds of, of things. Those, I think, are the only three that, oh, Paul Watts. Paul Watts, more recently, also worked at Pfizer and worked at Avery Point as a teacher in labs down there. He'd be a wonderful one to be involved in a water at this end of the, under the state. But he has served as the harbor master in the Mystic River area for the, for the, I think in the Town of Groton. I may be wrong.
Mystic?
Mystic, but it, but it's the Groton, Groton side. I think he serviced also Stonington.
Counselor Atwater?
A lot of my questions have been answered, but I'm just curious with, with the, when you say you're stocking clams and oysters and so forth, but as far as the oysters in the, in the river and, and all, are they a lot of seed oysters or are you using full-grown oysters?
Combination of both. And they, there's certain beds that are seed beds, and when they get big enough that they don't need to be covered, then they go into regular beds. But they, they spend about three, two and a half to three years in the river.
And, and are the seed beds usually in the floating trays?
No, our seed beds are mostly, well, some are floating cages, but most of them are on the bottom. Like Beebe Cove is the consummate nursery for seed. And probably 90% of what's in there is on the bottom and you don't even see it. You just waterski over the top of it, or motorboat, or fish, or whatever. It's all done at extremely low tide and when they're planted and when they're harvested, it's also extremely.
Your, your, your question prompted one thing that goes back to the start of when we took over the property in Noank. Our grand vision at that time was something like this, where we wanted it to be really an educational center down in Noank where we now have, where we now have the oyster condominium, condominium. The oyster, there is a condominium, but it's not, not for oysters. It's the Co-op.
Right.
And we had, we had a grand view that-
We can't, we can't hear you, but thank you very much.
We had to get more copies of that made.
That was called Neil's Wheel, because he came up with that. We were having all these inputs.
We can give it back to Mr. Burke.
And we probably got a half a wheel going now, because we do interface with Avery Point and other educational institutions.
Is this part of the plan? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Well, it was. We achieved probably half of that wheel. The Co-op is in the second 10-year lease, about year four on the second 10-year lease. And it's fully operational, growing seed oysters as we speak, and mature oysters going through all the time, market size. So, it's become, I would say it employs about 10 full-time people and has become a good, a real good source of oysters and food. And also helps to clean up this whole thing, helps to clean up the Mystic River to very, very clean levels. And we certainly test that river. Because they changed the sewer plant to UV light from chlorine, they downgraded the upper levels of the river for shell fishing. And we only can, where we used to take market-sized oysters out of the upper reaches and bring them out and decorate them off of Noank Shipyard, which is our decoration area, where you normally take oysters and put them for two weeks and let them clean out and then go to market. They will only allow us to take seed oysters out of the upper reaches. So, we have a two-year study going on with a university in Maine. We've got a grant for this. So, we sample the Mystic River every two weeks, in addition to water samples at the plant, the Stonington Plant, which is behind the railroad station. We also have five cages in the Mystic River at various points, and we take a dozen out of each cage. And all of this goes up to Maine to a lab. The study should end within six months, and so far, it's very, very promising. The river is very clean. And the hope is that we'll open the upper reaches to market-sized oysters. They still have to come out of the upper reaches and get decorated, but right now, we only can take seed, the little guys out there.
Roger, Roger has been talking about the Mystic River estuary. In the Poquonic River, where we have seeded oysters for a number of years now, we do find that there's a natural set. In other words, in addition to the oysters that we put in on an annual basis, we find oysters that we did not put in that are growing as a result of the, the environment being a good one.
Any idea what the, the commercial dollar value is of, of doing this?
It's pretty good, but I'm not gonna get into the numbers we've got. Three different businesses in the Co-op. You'd have to look at their books, and we don't do that.
Okay, I, I'm assuming it's profit-
There's a lot of oysters that go out of Noank. We got a, pretty much a truck every day, one truck.
That's a good lead-in, though. Our, our primary responsibility and focus through the years has been recreational shell fishing. We try to do everything we can to be helpful to the commercial interests also. But the regulatory responsibility, really, the power is held at the state level, and so we cooperate with them. They, they want an interchange between us because we're on-site and they know that we can be their eyes and ears. So, that's essentially what we do. They're, they're the ones that really, really control the commercial operation. Though, if we see something that we don't like, we're not bashful about telling the state that we want something done.
We should tell you that we have an office in the building down there that maintains all our records. And we also store our boats there. So, we do get that benefit.
Counselor Schmidt and then manager, which just be.
Well, I, I think you've answered the question, but I know that you do ship the seed oysters out of Connecticut to other oyster groups that cultivate them further. Is that not true? Or is that the business that's in the Co-op that does that?
The only, the only comment I can make on that is that initially, when, when we first attempted to get into more cooperation with the commercial interests, they were actually doing the opposite. They were getting seed from Long Island and going through the appropriate hoops with the State of Connecticut so that they could be brought in. And that's what was used in the, in the hatchery. They were, they had, they had a, a program that was working very well, but then they hit a speed bump in that they had a contamination for a period of time where they couldn't grow their algae that they needed for the very small size. And so, they've, I think, continued to get seed from-
We still get seed from Long Island. All of this is licensed through the state. But this year in particular, and last year as well, we're producing our own seed. And it does spread out. The Long Island seed ends up in Rhode Island. Some comes over on the ferry. And they are actually members of the Co-op. The seed produces on Long Island in Southold are members of the Co-op in Noank. And we, Shellfish Commission, are ex-officio members, so when we buy seed, or clams, or anything, or oysters from them, we get a much reduced price.
So it'd be interesting to have a tour of the Co-op hatchery.
We'd be glad to take you through anytime. We can take the whole bunch, or we can take you in groups, in groups.
A couple of comments along that line that are important is when it came time to take over the facility, the people involved, ourselves and others, probably on the town council, were concerned that we not get a sous-ear instead of the proverbial silk purse. So, the man who was the head of the Department of Agriculture for the State of Connecticut at the time was, was aware of our concern about that. And they did repairs, significant repairs, both to the dock, or I should say the pier, and to the building before they turned it over to us. And the, the Co-op has made improvements in that building and they're very proud of them. There's been substantial amounts of money that have been replowed into the, the building in order to have a top-notch operation.
Yeah, they put a chilled room in that's probably the, I don't know, third the size or quarter the size of this room. And you go in there and it's 45 degrees, winter, summer, whatever. And they can bring the oysters in and saw them and clams and grate them. And it's, you'll see guys going in there to, when it's real cold, you feel like you're going into a nice warm room. But they're working overcoats in there. Years ago, we did that with ice out on the pier, trying to keep them cold. And that was very laborious.
Mr. Burke?
The one thing the town does pay for is for the insurance on the boats. During the budget process, a few questions were asked, just what's the history of that? Why is that not through your budget versus the town?
We pay the insurance on our shellfish boats.
Correct.
Yes.
They're-
And the trailers and main.
And-
And I think you have insurance on our employees is if they get hurt or something.
Unhurt, yeah, to the liability, yeah.
Yeah, that's-
That's, that's a good point that you're making also, because we feel that there's multiple ways in which there's a contribution that comes from the town. I, I wouldn't want anyone to come away with the, the feeling that somehow that we're ignored. We get tremendous, biggest thing in, in my mind to start off with is that you have to sell permits. So, you say, well, I mean, that's gonna cost you a lot of money to, a lot of money to sell permits. The permits get sold at the fleece department because they're open 24 hours a day. So, that's very good. And they're very responsible about seeing that the permits are filled out properly. They're sold at the town clerk's office because it's so close to Poquonic River where the, we have our primary area for shell fishing. And they're sold in the City of Groton. And basically, the amount, the amount that we, we give them for that service is way, way below what it would cost if we were to attempt to set up to be able to sell permits in some other way. The list goes on. That's just probably the biggest example of way in which town-
And all the charts and they help us with that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so, yes, very definitely, there's ways in which the, the town helps us.
But as Neil said, the other towns are not self-sufficient, and we are to a great degree. We just pay, we stock, we buy seed, we pay our employees. Social Security or whatever comes out of our account, which is in the town.
Okay. Well, we thank you, gentlemen, for coming out. I think we've learned a lot. And we know where to get information if we have further questions. So, thank you for your time and thank you for your service to the town.
I'll report back to the chairman and particularly on, on your point about a visit. And I'm sure that he would be happy to look in, look into that and-
Sure, whatever. You can come down singly, any, pretty much any time.
Great.
You look like a good group. I can see why there are a lot of people trying to join you. It's a, it's a fun, fun group. And I won't pick out any particular individual, but they have fantastic backgrounds that they bring to the, the job and very serious about it. There's a lot to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, we are on to 2018-0132, the ARP Challenge Grant for the Senior Center. So this is attachment one in your packet. I don't see Ms. Riley here. Did you want to address this, Mr. Burke?
Sure. This is a one-time grant for $3,400 to AARP's Community Challenge Grant. They want to get a virtual senior center going. Senior Center without limits, where you could take classes remotely if you're homebound temporarily or long-term. So, it's for $3,400 for, I think it's two laptops and four iPads, one-time purchase.
I think I remember seeing this before. Did we have this before?
And it looks like there's some overlap with the Pfizer grant?
Okay, all right, that's what it was. So, there are two alternatives here. The first is to approve the Challenge Grant application, and the second is to not apply for the grant. So, we should, we should keep that in mind as we're discussing this. Counselors of Perry?
No, this is a $3,400 grant. It's not a grant from the town funds. It's a-
No, it's a grant request to AARP.
To AARP.
To bring funds to us.
And the, the computers will remain at the senior center?
The computers would, I, as my understanding, the iPads, of course, would go out for remote viewing, I assume, for the classes. You could check out the iPads.
That's indicated in the supplemental material here, the grant application. Is there any other discussion before we go back to Counselors of Perry? Counselors of Perry?
I move that we approve the application of an AARP Community Challenge Grant for $3,400 to purchase computers for the senior center program.
Second. Moved by Zepari and seconded by Parker. Is there any further discussion on the grant application? Seeing none, all those in favor of the grant application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to the Assessor's Update, 2018-0133. And we have the assessor with us. Good evening. Hello.
I understand I'm here to update you on the process of personal property audits. Okay?
Okay.
So, you know, we have three grant lists, the motor vehicle, the real estate, and the personal property. The personal property grant list are all the business assets, which would be furniture, fixtures, machinery, and equipment.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's getting, if it's getting picked up or not either.
Okay. These assets are reported annually by the businesses. It's called a personal property declaration. It's due November 1st of every year. We hire an outside contractor to audit a certain number of accounts whenever it's funded by the council. I think the last, maybe out of the last five sessions, grant list sessions, we've audited three times. And what those audits are meant to do is to clarify the record, to pick up assets that may not have been declared by the property owner. We choose accounts by looking at, maybe- We choose accounts by looking at, maybe if, if a declarant declares one year, and the next year, the numbers don't follow, they don't track from the year before, and the third year, the numbers aren't tracking from the second year. We look to accounts that might be remodel, where we, we've seen building permits come through, and we are following the personal property declaration to see if assets are being declared for that work, and it's not being declared. So we just kind of maintain a watch list. And, and, you know, really, the purpose of the audits is to just update the accounting records and authenticate the accuracy of the declarations that are recorded or filed.
I'm just taking notes for myself so I can refer back. Councillor, do you have questions?
Yes, I do. I wonder if you could explain to me part of this that I don't understand. If you are renting a property, and when you rent a property today, in most cases, you go in, you've got cement walls, and that's about it. So you do the improvements that you want to do for your business. Those improvements become the owners, because once you attach to the building, it belongs to the owner, if it's my understanding. But yet, the person that is actually renting the space is being taxed on it, and the owner of the building is being taxed on it. So how do we, how do we, to me, it's, it feels like, I'm myself personally, I'm okay. But it seems to me like a double tax. And, you know, we did have somebody that came and talked to the Economic Development Committee.
Yep.
And that's what brought about the conversation.
Okay, that's why I'm here tonight.
Good.
Okay. So those assets you're referring to are called leasehold improvements. And they, they are an actual asset, and who actually owns them depends on the lease agreement between the tenant and the landlord. And we assessors try very hard to not double list assets, the leasehold improvements. We try very hard not to double dip on those. And the building permits are a record. So the building permit will show the dollar amount, who took out the building permit, who did the work. We oftentimes will call the contractor, we'll call the landlord, we'll call the tenant to find out who paid for those leasehold improvements, because they are taxed as personal property. And they are carried in the accounting records, the general ledger of the person who actually paid for them. They are, they are depreciating those assets over time. So they are technically personal property, if they're declared by that property owner. And sometimes the cost is split between the landlord and the tenant. Sometimes you have a landlord that wants to fill empty space, and so they'll have concessions that they'll make. Maybe they'll pay for the leasehold improvements. In that case, we know not to add them to the record of the declarant. So we, we pay very close attention to the leasehold improvements, and we make a lot of phone calls when we can to identify those. And so you think of like a Disney store. If you're gonna walk into a Disney store, everything is gonna be Disney. It's not gonna be something unique to some other, you know, mom and pop retail store. Those, those things are inherent to Disney, and when Disney leaves, they're gonna take it all with them. So those are kinds of things that would be leasehold improvements.
So if somebody wanted to clarify, how they could clarify it is by the lease, and whether they've depreciated it themselves as personal property?
Yes, that, that's one way to do it. If, if this is a business that we've audited, then we've seen their records, and we understand that they are carrying those assets on their ledger.
So what somebody would need to do is just come with the, the documents that are needed in order to, to review it if they feel that it's not being taxed correctly?
That's true.
Okay. Is there a special time that they have to come? Or can they do that at any time? Or is it gonna be when the taxes, tax bill comes out?
So for personal property, that's a grant list that's recreated fresh every year. You know, we use old data, but it's a new number every year. There's an appeal process, once the grant list is signed. For accounts that are audited, it's the same appeal process. So they, every person that we audited, every person that had a decision, was notified of the appeal process, and they have the opportunity to go to the Board of Assessment Appeals, see what the Board of Assessment Appeals decision is, and then their next step is to take, to go to Superior Court. And all of that is outlined in their assessment notice in their audit documents.
Okay, it, I'm sorry, I have another question.
That's all right, go ahead. I don't think anyone else has questions on this particular issue, so go ahead.
Oh, crap. I stopped for a minute, I forget the question.
I can wait.
Oh, God, I was on such a good roll. Well, I guess, basically, I did have another question, but I'm sorry, it just went right out of my head. But I think I, I know how to talk to somebody a little bit better about this, and I'm sure you do, as they come in and, and talk with you. So, so there is a process where they could appeal it and possibly have a change, depending on their documentation?
Yes, and if, if we are still talking about audits, we, we've seen their documents. We've seen their books, their accounting records, their ledgers. Our decision are, is based on those numbers.
Okay.
So if they've gone to the Board of Assessment Appeals, they have the right to, you know, within 60 days of the date of their decision, to file with Superior Court.
Okay, so you only change, you would only change their numbers once a year, if you felt it was necessary?
The audits go back three years. So the audits that we just finished, we audited the 14 grant list, the 15 and the 16, and we use the numbers to update the 17 list, and then we use those audited numbers moving forward. And we, we put out an RFP, we hire an outside contractor, he does the audits for us, we work with him very closely to look at the numbers, and at the end, it is my responsibility to certify that those numbers are good.
I remember the question, if I say it real quickly.
Okay.
Is there any place that they can go to get direction that explains, depending on how your lease is, how you declare your taxes, et cetera, is what would be reviewed to arrive at this tax number?
Well, if they have an accountant or a CPA, that person would be versed in personal property law for the state of Connecticut as well, because they're probably filing their declarations for them. Beyond that, we have information, you know, we, we have all the state of Connecticut, Association of Assessing Officers literature, we have the International Assessing Officers literature.
But there's not like a handout that you give to somebody that's doing a new business? A small business. Big businesses, they know what they're doing, but if it was a small business?
Yeah. I will say, for all the new businesses that we discover every year, we have a program where we send them a welcome packet. It explains what personal property is, it gives contact information for the staff members in the office that work with it. It talks about the three important dates we want everybody to remember with a personal property declaration. So we, I have information in the office that can explain leasehold inform, you know, leasehold improvements.
Okay, so there is information that can be shared?
In fact, at Assessor School, the first full week of June, we're doing a personal property potpourri, and leasehold improvement's always a big part of it. I'll be one of the speakers. We're, we're on it all the time.
Okay.
Are there any questions from any other councillors? Councillor Heath?
Because I understand that we're not wiping away the tax liability, we're turning it over to a tax, to a collection agency, basically, is that correct?
No.
Now, this is the suspense list you're looking at.
Oh.
That's next, that's the, that's.
Okay.
He's in a hurry.
Are there other questions from other councillors? Councillor Atwater?
I read something in the paper today about a seminar, a meeting or whatever, in Norwich, I believe, this weekend, talking about nonprofits and how they're taxed. Are you involved in that? Is that becoming an issue for us here in Groton as well?
I went to the meeting last night at the Otis Library, and it was hosted by the Norwich Nonprofit Alliance, and I went as an observer. I did sit with another assessor, Marcia Standish in Stonington. We were asked a few questions. I know that SCOG is trying to put together a forum to discuss the nonprofit issues that some of the municipalities are having. We didn't seem to have that in Groton. We had a pretty robust campaign. Basically, if you're a 501(c)(3) and you're tax exempt, you have to meet certain qualifications for that tax exemption. Being a 501(c)(3) does not automatically make you municipally tax exempt. There's a quadrennial form that you have to fill out. This year, the forum was expanded by our State Assessors Association. We went from two pages to seven pages, because we need more information to interpret the statutes, and it's a rather lengthy process to go through all of the M3 forms. Some towns, the assessors were very, very thorough, and did not necessarily allow exemptions for properties that may have been exempt in the past. You know, we, we have gone down this route in Groton ourselves a couple of years ago with a nonprofit, and, but I think because our campaign was robust, we actually sent out a letter in June or July of last year, letting the nonprofits know the form had changed. We sent them the forum and said, so you know in advance if you have any questions when you get us, let us know. We're also asking for personal property declarations this year for the first time for nonprofits. So the whole program throughout the state has changed, and, and that is what the forum is about in Norwich.
Thank you.
Anything else from Ms. Garten?
I just have to, yes, I just want to clarify one thing. So your property lease dictates whether you're going to be assessed on it. So if you are a business and you're leasing a property, and you put in a new air conditioning system, and you're not gonna take that when you leave, you paid for it, but it's now part of the building, and the owner basically will have a better asset, it is still the business owner that put it in, who got the permit, or it is his tax liability?
Well, not for an air conditioner, no. That, that we would just build into the real estate, it's air-conditioned, we don't distinguish that to personal property. But if you put in carpet, or if you put in special lighting, or you put in a bar, those are all things that are actually fixed, and you may leave it behind, but because you're carrying it in your records as an asset under the state statute, you're taxed for that asset.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Is this mandated by the state, this form, that has to be filled out?
Yes, it is, yep. Personal property declaration, it is.
Because it, to me, it almost like defeats somebody wanting to redo a business, because it's gonna cost them more taxes if they fix up their business.
I, I would think they've already done the calculation, and the return on their business is gonna be greater than what their taxes increase is.
That'd be interesting to see. I appreciate you, you can, really.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so there's no other questions? Thank you very much for coming out and explaining that to us.
You're welcome.
All right, we are on to 2018-0109, the fiscal year ending 2018 suspense list, and this is Finance Director Landry.
Hello?
Hello.
We meet again.
Somebody looking familiar.
I have Melissa McGuire, she's a tax collector with me tonight. And I think you have my referral, that once a year, we're required to go through and compile a list of taxes that we deem uncollectible. And we come to the council and ask that you approve this, and so that we write them off of our books as being collectible, we no longer bill for them. But we do turn them over to a collection agency that has other methods to obtain addresses or to seek these people. So we do recoup some of the money that we put on the suspense list, but we just are not using staff time, or toner, or postage, or ink to rebuild these people continuously when they just come back. The bills just still return to us, because we can't locate the people. So the, the amount this year is 501, 574.54, and that's between the town, the sewer district, and Mumford Cope. And this is a drop from what was approved last year. But if you recall, we had the two properties that the town foreclosed on, that we had to write the taxes off, and that's why it was such a large amount last year.
And if you look at attachment two, there are two, two alternatives again, just as with the prior item. Option one, accept recommended additions to the suspense list, or option two, do nothing and require the continued costs associated with billing tax accounts that have been determined to be uncollectible. So as you're discussing this, just keep in mind, we're gonna be required to choose one of those two things. So Councillor Heath, this is where you had your question, I believe?
Right, so in 2013, you know, with the motor vehicles, call them, there were seven in 2014, 56, 2015, 177, and then 2016, 1,798. That just seems like a, a big change.
Are those remaining uncollected, is that what that is?
That's the actual number of bills.
Oh.
Correct.
Yeah.
He's asking why that was such a high number. Well, we do have a lot of people that we can't locate, bad addresses that we are getting from DMV. So we search DMV files to try to get a better address for these people, and we're unable to. We do have a lot of motor vehicles. So that's why we recommend that some of these people go to the suspense. Some are deceased, you know, not many, but, you know, you get deceased, bankruptcy, another reason why you would suspend an account for motor vehicle or personal property. It's just high. We do have a lot of military as well, that have bad addresses. An infamous one is One Crystal Lake Road that they like to use, that's not recognized by the post office.
Mr. Burke?
For 2015, that 177 is what remains uncollected. How high was that? How many were there at the beginning of it, when you first turned it over? I assume that list started with more, and it's been whittled down?
Yeah, we bill about, I don't know exactly for motor vehicle, but I know we, we bill about 44,000.
As these get collected, it comes off the list, so that number would have been higher earlier. I imagine when you have a stop on renewing registration and stuff, that you're gonna get those.
Registrations every two years.
So by next year, I assume this 1798 will drastically drop.
Drop, because of the collection agency is able to find them, resolve the issues that motor vehicle, you know.
Okay, did you have, follow it?
Yeah, just a second question. On motor vehicles, obviously, they can drive it out of town, move somewhere else. But with the real estate, is that just bankruptcies and foreclosures and that kind of?
Foreclosures, the town took over the property, mobile home parks, if the park owner evicted the person, we can no longer collect the mobile home dollar amount. And of course, you know, if we took over the property, then we're now owning this property, so we would wanna suspend those accounts.
Can you explain that again, please, on the, on the mobile homes?
Mobile home, if the park owner evicted a person.
Yeah.
They go through the court system, abandonment process, and then our lien is extinguished, and we can't collect on that dollar amount anymore.
Who's, who's the owner? Is the park the owner, or is it the person that abandoned it?
The owner is whoever lived in that mobile home at that time. So the park owner evicted the person for either not paying their lot rent.
Right.
Or they abandoned the, the mobile home.
Okay, so my question is, if it stays there, what happens then?
Well, then the park owner can have the option of selling the mobile home.
And he doesn't have to pay the taxes when he sells it?
If he has, if more money is gained on the sale, that makes him whole, then there's money left over to pay the taxes, but that's.
Well, if we say we're just not gonna do anything with it, how are we gonna do something with it if they, if they keep them, sell them, keep them, move them? I mean, we're taking ourselves out of the position of being able to collect the taxes, aren't we?
Not if it's gone through the court process. Not if it's gone through the court process.
No, that's not correct. I think this says, go ahead, why don't you explain?
Right, no, even though we suspend them, we take them off of our books, it's still collectible for 15 years. And that's why we turn them over to the collection agency.
Okay.
That has other methods of locating people that we just don't have access to.
Counselor Schmidt had her hand up, and then Counselors Aparo.
I just wondered, for motor vehicles, does that include all cars or motorcycles, vans, trucks? And what is supplemental, MV?
The motor vehicle supplemental is just a prorated amount. The bills that come out in July is as of October 1, a person owned the motor vehicle. Those are the ones that come out in July. The ones that come out in January are the motor vehicle supplemental bills. They own that tax, that car from October 2 to July 31.
Thank you. Counselor Zephar?
I move that we accept the recommended addition to the suspension that was put forward by the Finance Director.
That doesn't mean we have to end discussion on it.
Thank you.
So he's, Counselors Aparo moved Option 1?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Schmidt. We can continue discussion because we cannot end discussion in a committee of the whole.
There's a resolution. There's a resolution in your packet.
All right, is it after the?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you don't have it here.
I do not.
It's in my packet.
Okay. So for town, when we have the town council meeting, we will have the resolution, correct? I believe so. Any other people who haven't spoken yet wish to speak? Counselor Franco?
So even though they're in collections, we're putting liens on them? Is that how it works?
For real estate. And UCC liens go on personal property?
On personal property?
Yeah, we lean UCC liens. We record that with the Secretary of State.
Could you get just a closer to that mic?
Sure. Sorry.
Can you explain what that is, please, when you're, what is the prefix? You're saying before you say the word lien, UCC?
UCC lien uniform commercial code.
Thank you. Maybe I was the only one that didn't know what that meant. Do you have follow-up, Counselor Franco?
So what you're saying is we can collect taxes for 15 years?
Yes.
And even with, on collections, they can stay in there for 15 years? Are taxes different than, like, the private sector? Is that what you're saying? Because I think it's usually like seven years or something like that they can try and collect from you.
Our taxes are collectible for 15 years.
That's by state statute, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Any other discussion? Counselor Otter?
Rather than just pass this off as uncollectible every year, is there any way that this can be regulated or whatever to make the amounts less? I mean, some of these numbers, to me, seem staggering as far as being uncollectible.
Well, we still try to collect it, you know, as much as we can. Like I said, turning over the motor vehicles to a collection agency helps us track down these people that have left the state, or even in the state. When we don't have a good address to find these people, it makes it difficult. Sometimes these people don't know they have a motor vehicle bill because DMV gave us a bad address. So, I mean, we use the DMV's website to try to find these people, but it's wrong in DMV. We go 411.com to try to find these people, you know, White Pages online, anything that's free to us. But, you know, other services to do skip tracing costs money, and that's not in our budget.
My only other comment is that if you are short 17 cents next year, please come to me and I'll give it to you so you don't have to go through all this paperwork.
I had a question that I had addressed to the manager earlier. And if these people are owing taxes to the town, are they receiving other benefits from the town? And should they be receiving benefits from the town that other taxpayers receive? Say, for example, reduced fees at the golf course. If they owe you money, right, but they have a membership at Shenacostet and they're getting town rates, but they still owe their taxes? I mean, is there any way to, like, look at things like that to see if they're receiving benefits that, in my view, they should not be getting if they're not paying their taxes? There may be more, more of a cost to look into that and explore that than it's worth, but I don't know. That just seems like it's not fair if they are receiving benefits.
I'm not quite sure, from an administrative standpoint, how we'd even do that because we'd have to, the, what we don't have here is the entire list. I mean, the entire list is on file in the manager's office, and it's like about, yeah, it's pretty thick.
Oh, wow.
And to ask someone at the golf course to go through that every time someone wants to, or parks and wreck to register for a class, for the most part, these people are long gone. I mean, the tax office has exhausted everything open to them to try to locate these people. We wouldn't suspend a tax if we knew someone was living here in Groton.
Okay.
We would not.
That's good to know. Counselor Obr?
Two things I thought I would mention. On the real estate, have you ever thought about working with the Eastern Connecticut Board of Realtors? You know, because a lot of these properties have probably been in our system, and we probably know where the people are. And I don't know exactly how we'd work out that relationship, but I'm sure there's probably a way to do it.
For delinquent real estate?
Yeah, I mean, I've had properties that just couldn't be sold. And in the process of that, of talking with them or whatever, I know the people, I know where they are, you know. It's not sacred information, I don't believe. And, you know, you might, if you had access to the multiple listing service that we have, like everybody else in the world has, you could probably find a lot, some information on a lot of these properties.
Well, some of the real estate, like I said, the mobile home parks, if they're evicted...
No, I understand that. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm thinking you must have some houses here.
They're mostly, the housing is, you know, like I said, either eviction or the town owned. You know, as you might have heard, we are doing a tax sale on delinquent, you know, real estate accounts. So for the most part, real estate, we have good addresses on real estate.
Okay, so this is really more mobile homes, this amount?
Mobile homes are perhaps a piece of property that the town took in foreclosure.
Okay.
But typically, we would not suspend a house on a piece of land, only if it became town owned.
Okay, I have one other question, and I'll be quiet for a moment. How long have we been working with this collection company?
For the motor vehicles?
No.
Well, for any of it. I mean, your real estate probably goes to the collection company, doesn't it?
No, we're doing a tax sale, or we turn the foreclosures over to the town attorney if we do a foreclosure through the court system. Motor vehicles, we've been with American National Recovery Group for 20 years at least, and...
Okay, so we pay an attorney, then, to work with the people that have tax liens on real estate?
Right, if it goes through the court system.
Okay, and prior to that? If somebody has a tax lien, does the attorney, you know, call up when the lien goes on?
No, well, we file a lien, like, the current year, if they're not paid by May 1.
Yeah.
And now we're getting in the process of setting up a criteria for tax sales or if it has to go to a foreclosure.
There's a process that she goes through between the original bill and they rebuild, they have a tax collector's demand. They do everything on their end prior to turning over to the attorney. All collections, we try to keep in-house. Once it goes to the attorney, it's outside of our hands, like if we're pursuing a foreclosure of a piece of property for taxes.
Okay. Do you have any idea what we spend on that, or you?
Yeah, I didn't bring, I just started tracking the attorney's fees since I turned over, what, 272 accounts was on our first tax sale. Turned over around 73 accounts to the town attorney for the first tax sale in a while. And I've, my numbers have gone down considerably since, you know, monthly, it was over like 5, 6,000, and I think it's down to like 2,000 for the last few months.
Well, the attorney.
Attorney's costs, yes.
But when the attorney does these, handles these, his fees are part of the settlement, and we get those reimbursed back to us.
Okay.
Counselor Franco?
So you have some real estate on here going back to 2002. How long does this process take? I mean, is that property since 2002 been sitting in there vacant, waiting for taxes to be paid?
Well, we do have some mobile homes that are quite old.
They've been sitting there since, possibly vacant since 2002?
Well, no, people are living in them. Or, like I said, the mobile home park evicts them that has owed since then.
So 2002, I'm not quite understanding. So let's just say this is a mobile home. The tenant possibly was evicted. The mobile home owner starts renting it out, is that what he does?
Well, he goes through the eviction process through the courts. And like I said, when he gets permission from the courts that the person is now evicted, you know, and if it's abandoned, he has to go through abandonment process as well. But when he's granted that through the court system, sometimes we've had mobile homes that owe from 2002 to current in real estate taxes to the town.
So the people are evicted, they no longer live there. He's gone through all this process. Now it's, he has it and he can rent it out, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, he takes possession, he can either sell it, or he does rent it.
When he goes to court and goes through the abandonment process, but that negates the taxes that are due to the town, correct?
Correct.
So the 675 sits there and he has ownership of it?
Right, and our liens are extinguished.
But it's still on our record?
And you got to look, too, as of October 1. If this happened in March, the assessor sets their grand list as of October 1. So as of October 1, that person that was in, living in that mobile home that has now been evicted is now going to have a July bill. And I'm going to have to come back to you the following year saying this was an evicted bill, tax bill, real estate tax bill, that, you know, happened as of October 1, but, you know, they went to the courts in March.
So if the owner of the trailer park gains, he gets the trailer, he doesn't have to pay the taxes then, but it stays on our list. But we're never going to get paid for those, is that what you're saying?
Right.
And we can't sell the trailer because now he has possession?
Yeah, it's the court granted him possession of the trailer to sell it.
What if it was...
Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Zephar had his hand up.
I'd just like to say, it looks like with $501,574.54, and that looks like it's over a period of, since 2002? Am I correct?
Right, from 2002 to the current year.
So that looks like it's probably less than one-half of 1% of what you collect.
Yes, it is.
And I think anyone who's in business with the general public, they can collect 99.5% of its bills, has done extraordinarily well. In fact, I don't think anyone other than a tax collector could do that.
Well, thank you.
I, you know, you've got to expect that there are going to be people, one-half of 1% of the population that owns some simple property are going to be distressed and not able to pay their taxes for a while. I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Counselors Aparo and Schmidt move to accept Option 1, to recommend the additions to the suspense list. All those in favor of Option 1 recommending additions to the suspense list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. 2018-0131, request for Economic Assistance Fund Rogers Development LLC. And Mr. Bronk is with us this evening. Hello.
Good evening.
And you have Attachment 3 in your packet. As we're able to find the information that Mr. Bronk will be presenting. And again, there are two options presented. One is to do nothing, and the other is to approve the grant award. So Mr. Bronk can tell us all about this, please, thank you.
If I could, I'd like to pass this board around just to show you the proximity of the property that's in question. It really can't be viewed from this distance. The location's 10 Fort Hill Road, which is, it actually abuts the Groton Human Services Building to the rear. And what we are recommending is an award of an Economic Assistance Fund grant, as indicated in the referral. Also, before I get going, I do want to mention the applicants are here. We have Jonathan and Jack Rogers in the audience in the event that you should have any questions. But I think we've addressed most of the details in the write-up, and I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have. Just a little bit of history on the Economic Assistance Fund. This will be the first request coming before this particular council. Back in 2016, we did revise the guidelines for this program, and they were approved by the council. The goal at that time was to add a little bit more flexibility. This program is focused mainly on public infrastructure to try to help partner with developers and incentivize different developments and add to the grand list. So we better outline the process. We actually expanded some of the caps, up to two years' worth of taxes. We better defined what the program was, so I think most find it to be quite helpful. Rogers Development is planning on constructing a 19-unit townhome project. As you may be familiar, the market analysis talked about the high need for the right type of contemporary housing. We also have 80% of our workforce that are commuting into Groton on a daily basis. So we do believe multifamily housing is an economic driver for Groton. This particular development initially requested $70,600 within their application, as you can see in your packet. We often have a back and forth with applicants. And in all honesty, most of the applicants don't actually get this far because we do some pretty significant screening. We require that certain data is provided, and often, we require more detailed information as they progress through the process. Many applicants don't want to provide that detailed information, so they're screened out. So this particular applicant has been very cooperative, working with us, meeting our standards. After the initial application, we ended up focusing on a particular type of infrastructure, that would be sewer and roadway improvements. Why? Because we prefer infrastructure that's most closely aligned with public right-of-way versus infrastructure that might be deeper into a development, that might be more private in nature. So with that premise, we actually went through the EDC process. There's a particular committee that the EDC uses to help us review this. They also agreed. And the full EDC did endorse, recommend a certain award, and that was for the $41,940. The overall project's valued at 3.6 million, that's a construction cost. And the present land is assessed at $98,560. It's estimated to be approximately 1.8 million after the improvements. Annual taxes today are at $3,000. Post-improved annual taxes are estimated somewhere in excess of $50,000. As I said, the EDC supported this, and we are focusing on key infrastructure, the sewer and the roadway. And I think we're prepared to make our recommendation for that award. And the applicant is here tonight in the event that you should have any questions that I can't answer.
Thank you. I have one question. I attended along with Counselor Franco and... Thank you, I have, I have one question. I attended along with Counselor Franco and can't remember who else was there, the meeting that you had at the library regarding the aquatic bridge area and potential plans for that. By, by providing this grant, do we have any further control over what the project will end up looking like? As far, further than if the normal planning process went through? Does it carry any more weight? I noticed it's talked in here, the final paragraph talks about beautification of the project's physical road access and ensuring there's a sign there, so by giving the money, then we can put further restrictions on as to the appearance of the property?
I think we can to a certain degree, as long as there's a nexus to the program. The program focuses, focuses on infrastructure, they wanna promote quality development, so the signage, for example, I think that's fairly easy, because if we're gonna be a financial partner, we would like some recognition. There is a public access way and we are providing funding for that access way, so we wanna make sure it's beautified to the highest level possible, and I believe the applicant is willing to do what they can in that regard. So I think we do have some, some latitude to be a little flexible on those fronts.
Thank you. Are there questions from the other counselors? Counselor Parker?
Just one, since, the application, since it's gonna obviously start late, what's the anticipated date they'll be completed? But with the sewer and the building of the nineteen unit?
I actually don't have the completion date. Twenty twenty? When will the sewer?
Sewer will be completed, probably, are you ready? The internal sewer, just the, under way.
Mr. Bronk, could you repeat that into the microphone so it could be picked up for the recording, please? Or could the gentleman come forward? Please, thank you. We couldn't hear anything we're saying for the people at home. Are you Mr. Rogers?
Jonathan Rogers, Rogers Development.
Nice to meet you.
So the internal sewer system is already, is already underway. The external connections that we're applying for will be most likely finished by year end.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselors Zepari?
What assurances do we have that the money, that the grant money will be used exclusively for putting in that external sewer system?
Well, this is a part of a larger project, obviously, and we're offering some limited financial assistance. I think my answer is, obviously, all of the finance and the public and the private financing gets bundled together to complete a multimillion dollar project. But I think our protections are that, this is a reimbursement process. We need to be certified that the work in the roadway and the sewer actually was done to our specification. It will receive a review and inspection by engineering staff. And also, they have to provide documentation that the contractor has been paid for this particular item. That documentation is provided to the economic development staff. After we are assured that it has been completed appropriately and the contractor's been paid, not until then do we actually process the reimbursement.
So the organization will have control of the forty-one thousand dollars that's granted. But, you know, as, we all know that there are exigencies in any project. And there may be one that comes up that's not sewer-related and they spend that money on something else. And then the product, project ultimately does not get completed, but the sewer is not completed either. How can we get control? We're gonna put in forty-one thousand dollars to build a sewer, that one hundred and eighty-six foot connection, how do we be sure? How can we be sure that that's being built? Even if that project fails on that land, any project that's, that's commenced following that will need the sewer. And so we, we're making an investment in that property for the tax value of that property. But we're making an investment by, by financing the placement of one hundred and eighty-six feet of sewer plumbing. And I'd like not to be, I would like to be sure not financing the placement of two hundred and fifty-two plate glass windows.
I think the answer lies in the risk being shifted to the developer, we are not fronting the forty-one thousand. Again, we are reimbursing, so the contractor pays for all of these expenses on the front end. And we will not reimburse until after the fact, after we have inspected and made sure that the infrastructure has been done correctly and after they have provided the financial documentation.
That sounds like pretty good assurance.
Counselor Atwater?
Is there a performance bond? I mean, that would assure that it would be done.
Well, I think, my, my simple answer, I suppose, is similar to what I just mentioned. Often, a performance bond is to ensure something will be done later as promised. Whereas, this work will be done on, first, on the front end, which will be inspected to ensure that they have met our engineering specifications, covered over roadway meeting, all standards. And not until that time, and even beyond, they have, they have to provide us the documentation they've paid the contractor. Not until that point will we actually reimburse. So if they don't meet the appropriate performance expectations, the standards, the specs, they don't get their money.
Anything else from the council? One thing that I did note here, that you're using contractors that are from within Groton, so that's, that's a bonus. Providing jobs for our people in town. Anything else? Counselor Obray?
I just wanna add that I'm very happy that this Economic Development Assistance Fund is now being used in a proper way. There were many, many years that the money ended up being used on other things within the town. It didn't go to economic development. The EDC bought a house one time. I don't know whatever happened to that house, but I, I think you're doing an excellent job, you know, I think that the, the, you know, it's, it's just gonna move something forward, I think it's great that we're using it correctly and I thank you for putting it together the way you have.
Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
I was just curious, on a math, there is a house up on Route one, is that house part of the property? It was purchased?
No. No, there's a small office building that is part of the property, that's currently in use as a therapist's office, but the house is not part of the property.
All right, can I come over there for a moment? Can you, can you speak into a microphone, please, because nobody's hearing anything you're saying?
So I'm, I see that, I can only see one, there's two prop, there's two buildings there?
Correct.
So the one closest to the road?
Right, this, this red line looks like it's just a, sort of a, an average, but it really should cut in here and take out that house on the road, because that does not belong to the subject property.
Okay, but the one behind it?
Is part of it, yeah.
And do you have enough access for traffic to come in and out for all those condos?
Yeah, yeah, this has already been fully approved by planning and zoning, yep.
Okay, I was just wondering, because it doesn't look like there's much room. Okay.
Is there any other discussion on this? Counselors Zepari?
I move that we approve an Economic Assistance Development Grant, forty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars to the Rogers Development LLC for purposes of construction of a sewer along a hundred and eighty-six foot track entering the development that is.
So you're moving option two?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker. Is there any further discussion on this item? I think we asked good questions and we got appropriate responses. All right, all those in favor of option two for twenty eighteen zero, twenty eighteen zero one three one, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so I'm moving unanimously. Thank you very much. And at this point, we're gonna take a five-minute break, please. Thank you, we are back in session and we are on item twenty eighteen zero one three four, filling vacant town counselor position. And I just wanted to take a second and read from our wonderful charter, that is an excellent charter and should not be changed at this point in time. Section three point six vacancies in elective office, in particular, three point six point one, general. Any vacancy in any elective town office, except that of RTM member or member of the Board of Ed, from whatever cause arising, shall be filled by appointment by the town council for the unexpired portion of the term or until the next biennial election, whichever shall be sooner. So that's the process that we will be following in order to fill the town council vacancy of Councilor Rothzick. All right, we are on to twenty eighteen.
Question?
Yes.
I guess my first question is, you say that's the process, but, but when? And then also.
We will, we will turn to Counselor Heed in his capacity as chairman of the Democratic Party, yes, I understand.
Biennial, but go ahead.
No, no problem. What we've got is, our DTC meeting will be tomorrow night. The nominations committee discusses a few names, we come up with one name, and then the committee will vote on it. Any other nominations that come up are discussed as well at that time. The committee votes, whoever is majority, the committee then recommends to the town council, and then we vote on it. It, it's actually up to the town council to choose, not the nominations committee, not the committee itself, like the Democratic Town Committee. They just, the process has always been that they make recommendations, so that's, that's the process that we go through. But I know that you had a second question, a clarification, and.
Two questions.
Oh, okay.
If, if it goes to the Groton Town Democratic Committee or whatever, and they go through all of this process and so forth, to me, that doesn't sound like it's filled by appointment by the council. That sounds to me like the council has given some names and then we make the appointment, but that, again, I think the appointment and the decision and all comes from the council, if you read this. The second question I have is, it goes on to say that if there's a biennial election before the expiration of the term of office of any person appointed to an elective office under the provisions of this section, such office shall be filled by the election of the person for the unexpired portion of the term. Now, I've been told that it's a town biennial, biennial election. Well, if you have a town biennial election and we're elected for two years, then you would never have this need for a provision of saying that if its term is longer than, or if there's a biennial, biennial election before the expiration of the term. So I'm reading this as that if we're having a biennial election, which we are having this year, then we appoint a person who goes until November, who is then elected to fill the remaining year of that term. And I guess I would like some legal clarification on that.
Counselor Schmidt?
I believe that because this is the town charter for the town of Groton, that these are the specifications for a biennial election required for the town of Groton, not for the state or for federal offices, so that portion of it will not occur for another year.
But then you would.
And as, I'm sorry, and as to your, your first question, as Counselor Heed stated, it is a recommendation that comes from the town committee, it is not, it is not their appointment to do, it is the council's choice to appoint.
Which would mean then that they could make a recommendation and we could totally name someone else?
Correct.
Which has happened before.
Yes, it has. Okay.
And I'm still not clear why, if this is just for the town and we're elected every two years or biannually, why you then need to say if there's an election before the expiration of the term, because that would never happen.
Would, it looks like.
It's because your terms, when you are newly elected, don't actually start until the first meeting in December, according to the charter.
I'm not sure that I. Thank you, Nikki, but I don't know that that answers my question, but, but be it so, continue.
Counselor Heed again.
Is this something that we need to verify with the town attorney, like in an official? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, twenty eighteen zero one two seven, ordinance to establish operations for BYOB establishments. And this is attachment four in your packet. By the way, thank you for labeling the attachments, it makes it very much easier to follow along. So this is Mr. Burton's item to discuss with us, please.
Sure, this proposed ordinance, sorry, this proposed ordinance came out of several different discussions over the last few months. We're seeing more establishments that have BYOB, bring your own bottle, bring your own beer, whatever you wanna call it, there's a couple other names out there. Ordinance that sets some restrictions on what time of night that would be cut off. It's not covered by state statute, like places that sell liquor for consumption at their establishment. It's completely wide open right now, that's why we're seeing a lot of those. I just did a quick search on our, on the internet, just of BYOB places in Groton. Right off the bat, within a few minutes, I found nine of them, there could be some more missing, but there's at least nine of them out there. So in that ordinance, essentially just sets a, and this was drafted by legal counsel, but just sets some limits on what time of night you could allow consumption. And the, the main idea is to not allow it any later than what state law would for places that sell alcohol. But this current version has it set at eleven P M., that's a placeholder, it could change. We could have, you change it now for a, a notice for a public hearing, you could wait till the public hearing and just see if there's other businesses that come out and say, hey, that's gonna affect me. It can be changed at any point.
Okay, so just for clarification, this is for our discussion this evening, and the time that you have in the proposed ordinance is eleven P M. as the cutoff. If the council chooses, we can make a recommendation to change that tonight, or we can wait until the public hearing and get input from the community, is that correct what you said?
Correct.
Okay, very good. So do, does anyone have questions for Mr. Burton? Counselor Atwater and then Counselor Obray.
Are these BYOB establishments required to get a license? I don't mean for liquor, but just to operate or anything?
Nothing to do with liquor, I mean, whatever, depending on what type of, you know, I'm sure whatever food licenses or permits you need, but nothing to do with liquor.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Obray and then Zepari?
I'm just wondering where it is a part of this that would have to be released. You're saying that for it to close at eleven o'clock. Has there been conversation with the police department?
Yes, yes, and then, by the way, the eleven o'clock was recommended by the police chief.
Okay, so was there a recommendation?
In some of these places, they do check in and just check in on, make sure things are operated, you don't have twenty-one, you're under twenty-one-year-olds consuming, so they do some regular checks anyways.
Okay, so they're accepting the responsibility?
Yes.
Of, of knowing if, if it's not being abused?
Yes.
We have Counselors Zepari, Heed and then Franco.
Would this ordinance also control the charitable organizations, or even church groups, that are having special dinners and, and proceedings that they conduct? I mean, first of all, the limitation of the timing, would that be imposed upon a church group? With the prohibition against gambling, could a church group have a bring your own bottle party and still have a raffle?
The BYOB, if you look under definitions, the BYOB establishment means any business, any business facility, such as a dance hall, club, restaurant, lounge, meeting room or associations, whereas wherein patrons twenty-one years or older are allowed to bring their own alcoholic liquor to the facility. But it's meaning more business, more commercial related.
So it would not include, it would not include charitable organizations and churches?
Right.
Counselor Heed and then Franco?
The town manager actually already answered my question.
Counselor Franco?
So this, if we set the policy, this will affect whatever businesses we have, they would not be grandfathered in under?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. So, at this point, then, we're looking to do one of two things, adopt the ordinance or do nothing?
Not adopt the ordinance. Looking to just introduce it through a public, have established a public hearing.
So, then we want to change that wording on the paper we got?
Right.
So, we want to set a date for a public hearing?
Yes. And I need time to, we'll have to post it in the paper, I believe.
So, then we want to recommend that this go to a public hearing?
Correct.
How's that? That works, right?
Second.
Okay. So, moved by Granatowski that this item be scheduled for a public hearing, seconded by Heed. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor of recommending that this go to a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. All right. So, at this point, we need to, I believe, Mr. Burt, set a special cowl in order to set the mill rate?
Well, it's a question to the council. We need to have a special cowl before the next council meeting in order to set the mill rate, to discuss and set the mill rate, recommend it for the regular council meeting on June 5. So, the question is, do you want to have a special cowl at 6:00 PM on June 5 and then go right into the council meeting? At 5:30 that night, I believe, there's a personnel committee, at least tentatively scheduled.
My preference is to have the special cowl meeting rather than suspending rules and doing it during the regular council meeting. So, I would recommend that we have the special cowl in order to do that. I'm getting a funny look.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't know there was a personnel committee scheduled. That's not your normal...
Oh, it's not? Oh, maybe I'm wrong. I thought it was.
Isn't it like the middle of the month?
Third Tuesday.
Okay. I must have it on my calendar, not changed.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay.
So, we can still do 6:00 on June 5. Is anybody opposed to having the special cowl to get this into the works? Are we good? Okay. So, is that all you need from us, or do you need us to...
No, that's fine.
Okay, great. So, then we are on to twenty eighteen zero one two eight, enterprise zone, potential executive session. And I'm going to ask Counsel Heed to read this motion, please.
I hereby move that the members of the town council, town manager John Burt, assessor Mary Gardner, finance director Cindy Landry, economic and community development manager Paige Brunk, and town attorney Eric Callahan go into executive session pursuant to general statutes, section 1-210B10 and general statutes, section 1-206E, for the purpose of reviewing an attorney-client privilege document related to the status of state enterprise zones. I so move.
Moved by Heed, seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion on going into executive session? All those in favor of going into executive session for twenty eighteen zero one two eight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you.